Good evening and welcome. This meeting of January 14, 2013, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Danninghill?
Here.
Mr. Kruger?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Strelow?
Present.
Thank you. We are joined by a wonderful group from Audubon Elementary and Principal Ed Glazer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. He's given me the sign. All right, let's make it happen.
They're going to introduce themselves first.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to have them introduce themselves? Is that Mike Clive? I think it is. Okay.
Thanks for having us. Mrs. Griffin, she's our instructional coach. She came with me to help transport students tonight. But this group of students represents kids from different grade levels, but also almost every different program that we have at Audubon. Another thing that they have in common is all of them are involved in the after-school program. So Saint Mark's and Leisure Services, they do a great job down at Audubon, and they help a lot of our kids. So that's where these kids come from tonight. So Dayana, do you want to start by introducing yourself?
My name is Dayana. I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Charles White, and I am in fifth grade.
My name is Makayla. I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Brenna, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Deveria. I'm in second grade.
My name is Shana. I'm a kindergarten.
Pledge of Allegiance. For our highest.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. Good job. No celebration, no excessive celebration.
Excessive celebration.
No spiking on the red carpet.
That's taunting almost.
Mr. President, I move that Board of Education approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that Board of Education approve the agenda submitted for the regular meeting on December 10, 2012, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on December 10, 2012, as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry.
Mr. President, I move that Board of Education receive and file proof of publications of notice of public hearing on the Carver School Classroom addition and authorize payment of legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Carver School Classroom addition and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Project review?
Do you want to do a project review? Why don't we just take this action and get the public?
We have a vote yet. We're still in discussion.
Yeah. You want to?
Do you want to hear from Bill?
Yes. Okay. Bill, would you mind giving us just an overview on that?
I'm going to ask Marty Johnson, the architect on the project, to answer your questions.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. I'm Marty Johnson with Straka Johnson Architects here in town. Just pleased to share with you some of the results from our Carver endeavors. We put together the plans and documents with administration and staff, set the bid packet out. We received five bids. We had about a little less than 10 percent range from high to low, and we're recommending the low bid. It was a good, clean bid, and would like to proceed with Clower Manufacturing is what our suggestion is in that project, and also we're suggesting to include the alternate. We set it up for a two-classroom addition. It's at the southeast corner of the building. It was originally designed into the school when we did it here a few years ago as a planned expansion. The one change-up from that in terms of working with staff and administration on-site is they felt they could use a little bit more storage area. So we did include some storage areas that could actually be used as safe rooms as well, and we modified those into the design, and that's what was bid. And then we also identified some additional storage needs on the sports and athletics side, so we did do an alternate to do a small storage addition on the north side of the gym, and that came out from a favorable bid standpoint. So that's why we're recommending both the base bid and the alternate, and we're below our original base bid cost projections. So still with a nice contingency in hand as well. Any thoughts or questions? Be pleased to answer them.
Is there a? What's the plan for the current playground equipment that's in that area? Do they have an alternate site for that, or?
We're going to. We have to relocate the playground equipment slightly to the south, so there's adequate room to do that, and that's all part of the project.
And the timing of the project is such that how much interruption or transition has to be managed through relative to the school year can be done outside of the?
We're projecting it probably will not be done by the time school starts, but the disruption should not affect really anything minimally inside from a functional standpoint. So we probably will go into the fall slightly, depending on weather as well, but.
Any other questions? It's been, as I said, it's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing on the Carver School Classroom addition and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comments to the Board regarding this project?
Mr. President, I move that Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Point of order, Joni, relative to the resolution. I don't see a motion.
The entire wording is the motion.
Okay.
And it has to all be read, and the same thing with the resolution caps following after the recording of bids.
Mr. President? Be happy to read the motion.
Don't forget to read it.
I move that the resolution, we adopt the resolution, adopting the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Carver School Classroom addition project, whereas on the 12th day of November, 2012, plan specifications, forms of contract, form of contract, and the estimated total cost were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the Carver School Classroom addition project, and whereas a notice of hearing on the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the said plan specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost for the Carver School Classroom addition project are hereby approved and adopted as the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I just refer to it as read? The resolution. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Reports of bid. Resolution making award of construction contract. I move the following be resolved.
Oh, oh, sorry.
The reporting of bids.
Is the movement.
We'll just have the reporting of bids now.
Okay. So this needs to be read as?
And then after the reporting.
Are they going to report the bids?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
We'll get this figured out.
This is new.
It is.
Some new worded verbiage in.
New legal stuff.
That's what we got for sending Bill to a seminar. It's all good. It's all good. He's keeping us out of trouble.
Last time I ever sent Bill to?
Is this state government?
Time well spent.
Thank you for your patience with the new process. I was just learning how to get a little more organized myself. The public meeting was called to order 201 on December 20, and the following contractor's bid on the Carver project. Conlon Construction, the base bid amount was $536,000. Then there was the alternate bid to add the gym storage area, $57,000, for a total of $593,000. Portson Construction, base bid $545,500. The alternate for the gym storage, $64,700, for a total of $610,200. Tricon Construction Group, base bid $548,000. The alternate, $60,000, for a total of $608,000. Epic Construction, base bid $568,000. Alternate bid, $61,500. Total bid, $629,500. And Clower Construction Company, base bid $518,770. The alternate, $68,842, for a total of $586,919. May I answer any questions?
Thank you, Bill.
Shall I proceed?
You may.
Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the following bid for the Carver School Classroom addition project, described in the plans and specifications heretofore adopted by this Board, is accepted. The same being the lowest responsive, responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor Clower Development Corporation, Clower Construction Company of Dubuque, Iowa, amount of bid, $518,077, plus alternate bid, number one, $68,842, equalling $586,919. Section 2, that the President and Secretary hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor for the construction of the public improvements. Such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do appreciate everybody's patience. We were making light of it, but Bill and his team have attended some very good seminars in Des Moines that really help us kind of reset the process around these types of projects to make sure that we're doing things in the right order and got them buttoned up really tight, so we appreciate your time and your advice on that, Bill. Board salutes. Otto, I know you have one.
Mr. President, yes, I have one. I have a board salute to the Alternative Learning Center, the staff and the students. They're able to use our resources within our district for their January term psychology class. So again, that's another innovative way of what the ALC is doing for their students, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other board salutes?
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. If there's anybody in the room wishing to address the Board on any topics, now would be your time. Please step up to the.
We have a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. You will after I call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, there was nobody opposed. Anyway, it carries. Now, if there's anybody in the earshot of my voice that would like to address the Board, please step forward.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Suppose you want to vote on that one, too?
Probably.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there anybody, any Board members that wish to have anything removed from that consent agenda for further discussion?
I suppose you might want to let the audience know what is all in that consent agenda that we're approving all at once.
Oh, he's going to put me on the spot. Yeah. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Yeah, the consent agenda includes, obviously, treasurer's reports, listing of accounts payable, obviously, the committee meeting minutes from our facility support services back in January, a personnel report, the reports of the educational programs policy and strategy committee, as well as minutes from the Dowzell Hempstead Core Committees, and an activities meeting, or activities committee meeting that was conducted on December 13.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If there is anyone wishes to have anything removed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to Facility Support Services Committee Report. Mr. Bytine?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a handful of motions. We'll begin with, I move that the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30, 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30, 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. Kelleher, do you want to make any comments on that?
Yeah.
Good evening, Board members, and Mr. Ryan Gans. At Tuesday's Support Services Facility Committee meeting, the auditor came and presented us with the audit report, otherwise known as the Certified EMO Financial Report. He went through his comments. We received a unqualified opinion, which is what we always want to receive. There was some statutory comments that they have to report on, such as there was an adjustment to the certified enrollment of 1.34 students, which is very minimal, but other than that, there was no other comments that they had as far as things we should change our process. They gave us an unqualified opinion on our federal compliance as well as our internal controls. So overall, it was an excellent report for the public. When it becomes available, they can look at our website. The CAFRA will be on the website after tomorrow, and they can look at the MDNA section if they want to look in the front of that. That's kind of the things that happened in 2012, and at the end of that report is kind of the economic outlook for the district.
Any questions for Mr. Kellerman? I would point out, having sat through that meeting, that in addition to, and I think a good recommendation to the public would be look at the MDNA section at the beginning of that. That helps you make some sense of a very complicated process, but I would also point out that the auditors were, once again, very complimentary of Kevin and his staff and the good work that they do in terms of helping us be good stewards of the funds that were provided. And so, Kevin, we thank you and your entire staff for their good work. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President, the next motion, just a little bit of background for the benefit of those looking in on us this evening. As many of us know, we've completed a fairly detailed audit of the existing pool facility at Hempstead some months back, and we're presented with some options relative to its either renovation or continued use, and on that basis, we determined that perhaps a different venue might be in order that would accommodate the needs of the district. And as such, we began to dialogue with the city in evaluating what might be a joint venture. And towards that end, there have been meetings with staff and members of the city manager staff to evaluate what kind of venue we might jointly create. And as such, both parties have entered into agreement to sponsor a request for proposal out to determine what the exact needs would be of the city and the exact needs of the district. And so that's what led us to this evening and tonight's motion, which I will read. I move that the Board of Education approve the request for proposal for an indoor aquatic center study.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the request for proposal for an indoor aquatic center study. Any comments, discussion?
I would only reinforce something that I know that Mr. Barton feels very strongly, as well as other members of the Board, is that any partnership ultimately is a measure of what both parties are bringing to that partnership. And so I want, I guess I want to remind everyone or reinforce the fact that this conversation is about a shared resource, but also a shared investment. So I just leave that comment and where it is.
Yeah, I would add a couple of things. One, to reiterate that, we have looked, obviously, we did an assessment of the current pool. We've come to the conclusion that the dollars to remedy that are probably not in the best interest of the taxpayers or the district, and that as we discover what is possible down the road in this joint RFP with the city, we remain conscious of exactly what our needs are. We will certainly embrace the idea of partnership, but also will continue to be very conscious of the investment made by the school district as a part of that partnership. The other piece, probably to put a little timeframe for folks, I think it was discussed at the facilities meeting that we would expect that this would be an RFP that would probably go out in late February, March kind of timeframe, looking for responses back from those particular parties in the spring, and then seeing some results August, September timeline, all subject to change, but that maybe frames it up for folks wondering how quickly this occurs and how soon we might know. But I think those are the tentative timelines that the groups working together have adopted.
Mike, I might just add that, for clarity, for those of you who are watching, this isn't a vote to spend any money. This is just a vote to ask those companies who do this work to consult on the feasibility studies, to tell us how much they would charge us if we would, and then we'll make a decision with the Board, make a decision in conjunction with the City Council about whether or not it's a cost worth incurring to study the possibility of a swimming pool. So the vote tonight just simply says, we're interested in hearing what types of proposals people will make, those consultants will make to do that study and what that cost will be.
So it's a vote to formally explore.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, they'll be doing a number of things in addition to, you know, some processes by which they will try to define the demand, if you may, for such a service. Obviously, we know what we need. There'll be, I'm sure there'll be opportunities for the community at large to plug into that. It will also look a little bit at what the configurations in those, you know, those aspects of the project might include. We'll look at the costs of those. We'll look at potential sites. They will analyze all of those. Those are all, and that's the part that I think that this, in reviewing this at the committee level, this is the part where I think both the city and the school districts' folks that have teamed together to do that have done a very good job of making sure that we get what we ask for and not a lot more, that sometimes has a tendency to cloud the picture. We've actually boiled it down, gotten it down to the, exactly, here's the format we want. We want it in this font. We want it in these number of pages and not to exceed. That may seem odd, but those of you that have been on the receiving ends of RFPs know they can, they run the full spectrum, and they really become very difficult to compare. And so I applaud the work of the committee because I think they've done a great job of putting some boundaries and establishing some boundaries that allow us to really understand what they're proposing, and that will then be an opportunity for us to move forward.
And I guess I'd add, you know, I think this is really a step before exploring. This is a vote to find out how much it's going to cost to explore.
Correct.
I mean, we haven't even got to that, so when, if we get some responses to this RFP, at that point, we'll have to decide, we'll have a dollar amount, we'll have to decide if it's in both the city's and the school district's interest to commit money to actually study or have somebody study that, the feasibility of the aquatic center at that point down the road.
Correct.
It's very initial right now.
And I would like to add, too, that this is something that has not just cropped up just this year for those new Board members. Now, Tom, you've been, you were on the Board about seven, eight years ago with you, and Donna Barley was on, that was her big pitch, that we need to do something with the city on wellness. And so it's taken literally seven years since I've been on the Board, seven years to get to this point. And so I applaud those Board members that were before us, and now that we finally are at least putting it out there. And it's a long, it's a long process, so it's not going to happen overnight, but thank you for allowing us to at least do some talking with the city, and hopefully we can come to some consensus.
Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education award a purchase order for eight replacement school bus units to Hoagland Bus Company Incorporated in the net amount of $672,020 after trade-ins.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education award a purchase order for eight replacement school bus units to Hoagland Bus Company, Inc., in the net amount $672,020 after trade-ins. Any discussion necessary?
I just mentioned that we have a fairly well-established bus replacement program. We don't hold on to any buses beyond 10 years, and this is simply kind of an annual basis. We evaluate our needs and secure the buses we need.
And these come with the auto Kruger air conditioning, right? The windows come down.
And the painted, and the white painted roofs.
And the white roofs to reflect the sun.
That's right. Yep. Tom, you want it cooler, you're dry faster.
Safely.
Safely. Safely. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve change order number six to Portson Construction Incorporated on the Dowzell Field Renovation and Hempstead Field Improvements Project in the amount of $12,739.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number six to Portson Construction, Inc., on the Dowzell Field Renovation and Hempstead Field Improvements Project in the amount of $12,739. Discussion?
I think this has more to do with some unsuitable soil and extending a retaining wall.
They're very, fairly small.
Right.
Small dollars, and yeah, the majority of that number is some replacements.
And well within our contingency.
We remain well within our contingency. Yes. Knock on wood. Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Kennedy School Edition remodel project, and set the date, time, and location as March 11, 2013. Excuse me. 2000, yeah, 2013. It's mispiped here. At 5:30 PM at the Forum 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids on said Kennedy School Edition remodel project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Kennedy School Edition remodel project, and set the date, time, and location as March 11, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids on said Kennedy School Edition remodel project. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Jones Campus Elevator Edition Project, and set the date, time, and location as March 11, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Jones Campus Elevator Edition Project. Elevator Edition Project and set the date, time, and location as March 11th, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kellaher, you're going to present the quarterly budget report?
There are really only three things I want to bring to your attention tonight. First one is on tab six, page 22. You will see the total year-to-date activity for general fund as being $53 million. Look over for the percent of budget, which also includes $8 million worth of encumbrances out there to be 51%. So for cash purposes, we've really only spent about 45% of our budget through six months. So that's looking positively. The second item I'd like to bring to your attention is on page 26. It's the second line item, the cash reserve property tax. You will see that that's down substantially from the prior year. The reason for that is because of our cash balances. We no longer need to levy for that additional cash. And that's reflected last year when we lowered the levy rate by over a dollar. The second, or the third and final item that I want to bring to your attention is on page 28, I'm sorry, page 29. It's the management fund expenses. You will see they are, or management fund revenue, I'm sorry, that that's up considerably from the prior year, reason being we had to levy for the additional early retirement dollars that were paid out in July from the year before. Any questions on that?
Any questions for the board?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Strillo.
Unfortunately, our last meeting, I think, was scheduled for Christmas Day. And though George and I wanted to go, we couldn't get canned. We canceled it. We do have a meeting scheduled for the 29th of this month. I've also, as a subgroup, we've got the sponsorship group that rolls up into this committee. And I've been trying to schedule Mike size. We've actually had a luncheon scheduled, but as luck would have it, that was the big snowstorm day, so we canceled that one. So, but we're working on getting, getting some movement in that area as well.
Thank you. We have a series of, under new businesses, a couple of proclamations.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Jr. and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board, on behalf of the Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to the Board of Education approve the proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Jr. and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board. The proclamation reads, whereas on Sunday, January 20th, 2013, our community will celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., beginning with a gathering at Jackson Park at 1:00 PM and a march to Prescott Elementary School to witness the awards in the annual NAACP tribute contest. And whereas on Monday, January 21st, the 21st Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Breakfast will be held at the Grand River Center at 7:30 AM with keynote speaker Kami Dean coming home to the beloved community, one black woman's perspective on race diversity and making a home in Dubuque. And whereas in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the King Center is urging people to reject all forms of hatred, bigotry, and prejudice while pledging to do everything in their capacity to make America and the world a place where equality and justice, freedom, and peace will grow and flourish. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, President of the Dubuque Community School District, Board of Education of Dubuque, Iowa, do hereby proclaim, January 20 and 21, 2013, as days of great celebration in honor of Martin Luther King Jr., I urge all citizens to join in keeping his dream alive by joining in the celebrations, dedicating their lives to creating the community of Dr. King's dream, and pledging a nonviolent way of life in their dealings with all people, signed this 14th day of January 2013. I believe Claudette Beez.
Vote.
Did we vote?
No.
Yeah, we have a motion, I guess, yeah.
We didn't vote, okay. Well, hang on Claudette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There, you got to hear the whole proclamation. Claudette Beez is our Assistant Principal at Hempstead. Is that it to you?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll send this. So we make it official.
What's for breakfast Claudette?
Oh, everything. Do you mind if I just take one minute?
Please, take.
Faces and Voices is the committee that puts on the breakfast. And we would really like to thank Dubuque Community School District. Without your support, we could not make this breakfast possible. We appreciate the fact that you allow us to make copies. You support us in just numerous ways, and we really thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the National School Counseling Week proclamation and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to the Board of Education approve the National School Counseling Week proclamation and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
I will read the proclamation. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim, February 4th through the 8th, 2013, is National School Counseling Week, signed this 14th day of January 2013. And I think Tisha Bush, a counselor at Dubuque Senior, is going to accept this, if I sign it. Tisha, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You can. It's all yours.
Okay. And I just wanted to thank you also. Obviously, I represent, I think, an amazing group of professionals that work day in and day out to do the very things that you just said on the proclamation. I couldn't say them any better myself. But we thank the Board for support, our administrators, fellow teachers, and parents in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tisha.
Yes.
Claudette's hosting us for breakfast. What are the counselors? They have anything?
We host our teachers at senior for a kind of breakfast.
We just need the date and time, Tisha, to be there. That's all we want.
Tom could use some time on the couch.
I'll put that on the to-do list.
It's quickly getting away from us here.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education appoint George Davis as the delegate and Tammy Ryan as the alternate delegate and authorize them full authority to cast the district's weighted elector vote as district, or Director District Nine convention scheduled by Keystone AEA for February 11th.
It's been moved and seconded to the Board of Education appoint George Davis as a delegate and Tammy Ryan as the alternate delegate and authorizes them full authority to cast the district's weighted elector vote at Director District Nine convention scheduled by Keystone AEA for February 11th. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the district's school improvement leadership team membership as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded to the Board of Education approve the district's school improvement leadership team membership as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education allow student number 806636 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective January 15th, 2013.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to the Board of Education allow student 806636 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective January 15th, 2013.
You may remember about four months ago, we, at a board meeting, voted to expel this student. But in lieu of that, I met with him in advance, with the student and the grandmother, and we outlined the ways in which or the things that the student needed undertake in order to be readmitted. I met with that student again two weeks ago, and we've received written documentation of all the steps that we've asked him to complete, and he has done so. He seems to be motivated and excited about returning to school. And at this point, we would recommend that he be allowed to return to finish his education.
Outstanding. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board member administrative issues. Let's start with board members. Mr. Barton?
I would be remiss if I didn't just say something kind about my old board colleague, Kami Dean, who is going to be speaking at the, at the Dr. King Breakfast. She was such a wonderful woman to work with on the board. I think she was our Dubuques' first ever African-American elected official, wasn't she?
Correct.
Yeah. So, you know, and she did that matter-of-factly, and I never once on the board with Kami felt like it was about race, yet that is probably her significance in the history of Dubuque, Iowa. She was just simply a fine woman and easy to work with on the board and very thoughtful and very, very intelligent and brought a lot to the table. So I, I'm, it'll be fascinating for me to sit there in the crowd and hear Tammy's story about her impressions of being in the mix of this thing. I bet I'll hear some things that I didn't think I would hear, and it's just going to be a fascinating morning. So it'll be interesting to hear Kami's speech when she comes. We're lucky to have her, and she, she really did a lot of great things for the community as she served on our school board.
Here, here. Now, do you think that'll get him his breakfast comped or not? I don't know if that's going to make it.
We need more proclamations.
He needs to work harder for that.
I like proclamations. I'm a big proclamations guy. They come with breakfast.
We, we're excited about what she does. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I guess I would like to thank the administration for taking some time to look at how to proceed with the, with the transportation facility that's currently located at Senior High. That was on the agenda. Some of us had concerns with going forward such a large expenditure with the paving without looking at alternatives. Some of those concerns of mine related to the fact that I've always been told that they don't have enough room at the transportation facility for what they have, and there's really no place to grow of that space at Senior High. When I look at the space needs there, we need space for improving our pickup drop-off and the in and out of the senior parking lot. We need space for more parking. We need space for baseball, and we need space for transportation. And I don't think there's space for all of those things. So whether it's baseball, I think it comes down to baseball or transportation at some point, assuming we want, the priority would be parking and moving the drop, pickup drop-off off Clark Drive. But in any event, the administration's going to take a year and look at that, look at what some of the alternatives for transportation might be, do a little more of a valuation. I don't know what the answer will be, but I'm glad that they're going to take some time and really weigh some of those pros and cons because it's going to be a difficult decision up there with the space needs we have at Senior High and the future needs we're going to have for probably more space for the transportation facilities we go on out in the future. One of the things that Jim Bermer mentioned, it wasn't that long ago, we only had 16 buses in the school district. I think we got about, we have about 80 now. So it's one of those things that if, it's hard to believe, it really wasn't that long, maybe 20 years ago, we didn't have that many buses. So anyway, I'm glad they're taking, going to take a year to look at that and study that. And we're really in no urgent need to do that repaving project right now. So I appreciate taking that time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other board member concerns? Administration?
I guess I'd just like to take a second and point out that the legislative session in the state began today, and there's a lot of news on the education front. The governor put out his reform plan today, which is available online and in the media. I've provided a copy for each of the board members as well as the current position on allowable growth. And so without getting involved in the politics, I would just invite everyone here, as well as those watching at home, to be in tune with what's happening in Des Moines. In particular interest to us, of course, are the educational issues. The decisions made by the governor and the legislature have huge ripple effects to the way education plays out for all of our students. And so it's, it's, now's the time to pay attention and to voice your opinion regardless of what that may be.
Thank you.
You did very well.
Hopefully vanilla.
Doesn't mean we have to be, but you can.
That's right.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Preview of our February, upcoming February 11th meeting.
As you remember, a few months ago, we, the board, voted to pass the strategic plan, and we, as an administration, promised some follow-up with that at an upcoming board meeting, in particular with the third row, the success will be measured by column. And so we will be spending some significant time on our plan with that, start to talk about some of the, now we know what our goals are, what the vision is set by the board, how will we measure whether or not we're able to move the needle and improve student achievement and all of the other areas that are included in that plan. So it should be an interesting meeting.
Bet it will. We'll look forward to it. All right. I believe that brings us to the end. We have nothing left to do other than adjourn. Thank you.